Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you as well.
Would you please rise and join me in the bleachers? Really, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Janudas?
Here.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Mizek?
Excuse me ma'am.
Mizek?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Kochee?
Here. Council, we got a lot of minutes here. We have the minutes of the budget work session of November 25th, 2019. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance. Rhodes, second by Mizek. Call the roll please.
Spinks?
Here.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochee?
Yes. And you have the minutes of the work session of December 16th, 2019. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Janudas, second by Lou Hardy. Call the roll please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochee?
Yes. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of December 16th, 2019. Corrections to that? Seeing none, and motion for acceptance by Mizek, seconded by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And Kochee?
Yes. And finally, the minutes of the organizational meeting of January 2nd, 2020. Corrections to that? Motion for acceptance by Spinks, seconded by Janudas. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Abstain.
Saunders?
Yes.
And Kochee?
Yes. And finally, the minutes of the organizational meeting of January 2nd, 2020. Any corrections? Motion for acceptance by Mizek, seconded by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Abstain.
Saunders?
Yes.
And Kochee?
Yes. And under old business, we do not have our law director with us tonight, so I get to do all the reading. Hope it's better than I started. Yep. We have an ordinance establishing the Archibald Willard Park Pavilion rental rules, regulations, and fees, and declaring an emergency. Motion for suspension by Spinks, seconded by Janudas. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochee?
Yes. Motion for third and final by Saunders, seconded by Rhodes.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The Archibald Willard Park Pavilion is actually the pavilion in the rear of the Allenwood Center that connects to the pool. What this does is, as obviously it states, it details more defined rules for when groups rent that facility. It does establish a small rental fee to reserve that area, as well as various regulations that you have to follow. So it basically is cleaning up and detailing what is required. In the past, you would write, you could reserve it free, but it was only half of the pavilion. The other half was first come, first served. There were times where it was creating a little bit of a rift for individuals that wanted one half or was expanding to the other. This allows for someone to really secure that area for a family reunion or a picnic, and also lays out various other guidelines to follow. We actually, Parks and Recreation staff viewed multiple other communities as how they detailed their pavilion areas, what types of rules they have, do they charge, and we took that information and presented this to City Council.
Thank you. And we did have three actual readings for it, so nobody called me about it, so I think it's good to go. And call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochee?
Yes. And we have ordinance number 9747, an ordinance amending ordinance number 9646-18 pertaining to section 1105.03 entitled Fees, Deposits, and Charges Regarding the Recreation Center and Declaring an Emergency. Motion for suspension by Rhodes, seconded by Saunders. Call the roll please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
And Kochee?
Yes. Motion for third and final by Janudas, seconded by Spinks. And Mike again.
This is, first and foremost, it is not an increase of fees in any which way at the recreation center. This is cleaning up the language on how we collect a security deposit and put it towards a specific rental in lieu of having to reimburse individuals after their party. It makes accounting for various events much easier. So all of this does is it changes the policy as far as when individuals rent the facility and make payment, what constitutes a deposit, and not having to wait on a return check after their event.
Thank you. Call the roll please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochee?
Yes. We're going to get into reports, but I'm going to steal the thunder before anybody else does. You probably got in the mail this week, or you will be getting the new booklet from the Recreation Department, Parks and Recreation. Fabulous job done by Aaron and Mike down there and the rest of the 13. All the different activities going on. This is for spring, going into spring and summer. But it's a great piece of material they brought out, so, you know, people didn't always know what was going on at the Rec Center. This really tells it all, and I want to commend those guys and the staff down there. They're really doing a great job and just have elevated that department to what we hoped it would be. And give my thanks for doing a great job. And if you haven't got it, you'll begin as soon, I don't know if people in the apartments will get them, but there's a couple copies.
Every name and address, we'll receive them. And there's a couple here for you.
Apartments too?
I believe so.
Okay.
If not, let us know, and we can get them to you.
So that's just a good thing, and I wanted to be first to congratulate them on that because I'm excited to see what they're doing down there and how they're elevating that department with some fresh ideas. They're doing a great job. So with that, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. One other item I do want to mention, when you do get the booklet, it outlines a lot of different programs for all ages, for families, seniors, all kinds of information. But take a look at all of it, including on the back page. On Saturday, March 21st, at 10:00 a.m. at Allenwood, a staff's going to conduct, we're going to have a town hall meeting. Obviously, we worked to put together new programs and new ideas for everybody, all ages in town, but we also want to hear from the public. Obviously, there might be some things that you may want to see, and we can work to implement some of those program ideas. There's also some information on here. If you have experience in teaching a class, or if you have a hobby, or if there's something you're good at, let us know. We'd love to have you put together a program or work with you to offer some, you know, expertise you may have, share that with the public. So in addition to the new programs and registration, take a look at that detailed information because there are some other things in there that is important. And definitely kudos to the staff, as the mayor said. Couple, just a quick reminder on a couple of items. We did get notice from the Cleveland Metro Parks that they are going to be, once again, performing their deer management calling program. That is going to run through March, and it's primarily in the areas, obviously, where the parks are, it's their property. But if it is being conducted, you'll see the proper signage and park being closed. They will have that posted. So that will run through March. I'm sure everybody has witnessed, we have Dominion, East Ohio, doing the main gas line repair over at Five Points. It does include Powers Road, a small section of Center Road, Maple Dale, all through that area. We are working with the contractor, especially over on Maple Dale, because that roadway cannot be closed, and they understand that. That's our way of getting our emergency personnel to that side of town when there's a train. So they are working with us on that, so rest assured that that road is not going to be entirely closed. We also have to take into consideration schools and school busing and things of that nature. We do have an inspector on site through the whole project, so they will be, obviously, replacing, if it's concrete sidewalks, they will be required to do that. The whole project is 90 days. I don't want to say they'll be completed in 90 days because, obviously, you never know the status of a project, especially during the winter months, but hopefully it's sooner than later. We are working on a couple of different projects. One, some city-owned property that we have, which is a former YMCA building. It is not our intention to keep that property. We want to look to develop it, and the city is working with an appraisal to get an appraised value on that as we look towards marketing and/or making it, hopefully, a transaction with a developer or a business owner to get that developed. We want to get it cleaned up. It's vital to what's happening up at Nettlebrook because there's a lot of good things in the work in that area. The other piece of property is, we are working with Cuyahoga County on appraising all of the property, all of the remaining property that is undeveloped in Tinkers Creek Commerce Park. If you recall, that property is sat, ready to be developed, but obviously, there's some other challenges that we need to navigate through. The first step is getting it appraised, and we're working with the county to get that appraised. We should have that in by the end of the week, and hopefully, we can work with the property owner, Cuyahoga County, who holds a note on that property, as well as with some potential interested businesses, to come up with some type of structured deal so we can see development. And that's our goal, but there's a first step, and that first step is the appraisal. I want to give a quick thank you to Ben Needham. For those of you that don't know, Ben worked with the successful immersive theater project, The Shadow of the Run, that was in downtown Bedford, that primarily took place on the Commons and the Train Depot. They also did the theater project this past summer. They do, for those of you that haven't had a chance to partake in one of them, next time they're here, make it a point. They do a tremendous job. They had some press release, I believe it was on WKYC, and it really brings that immersive theater, that art component, to town. They love doing it in Bedford, and hopefully, we can continue to partner with them and have them do more of those in town. So I just wanted to personally thank Ben. His team did a great job. Lastly I have is, we are having the State of the City, our annual State of the City, which is scheduled for February 13th. It'll take place at Light Up Hearts Villa. Doors open at 11:30. If you would like lunch, you can purchase a ticket. Lunch will be served at noon. Presentation will probably start about 12:30. If you are unable to make it, I mean, we are having it videotaped. It'll be online, you can watch it online. There's a lot of great things that we were able to accomplish, our staff and council was able to accomplish last year, and the goal is, and we already have some things in the work to where 2020 hopefully is even better. So if you can make it, please do so. A lot of good things that we can't wait to announce. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Yeah, we're finishing up the year. We finished 2019, had all the figures. We're into the new year already. Tax Department's gearing up right now. We're trying for a test this year, the online e-filing, where we're going to have a paperless system where we will file. We do, in line with that, we're going to have to do some verification process with the IRS. It's a program we'll do through the City of Cleveland and CCA, verify income along with that, but we're going to try that program. One time only, though they use the online system only, e-filing only. It's only for those few that have been doing that program. So everybody else will be expected to send their W2s and all their paperwork in as usual. And even with the online system, if you ask for refund, we will require the paperwork that goes with that, as well as if we request it for verification purposes for the department. So for the most part, we're still going to be requiring paperwork. Very few limited situations, we will try to see if we can do paperless, depending on how that goes with the accuracy of the returns for 2019 filed in April. Other than that, we're very busy. It's a very busy time of year, and end of my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Good evening, everybody. Been pretty busy in my ward, some good things, some bad things. I'm going to start off with the good things first. Mike, big thank you to the Service Department, I remember we did it during the storm last weekend, all the high winds. Of course, everybody knows we have a lot of dead trees, trees that are dying on our tree lines on Natalie, and it was really strange because it's just like the wind blew a big hunk of the trunk right in the middle of Natalie. And I was like, oh, I can move this, so I get out, and that was really heavy bark. The neighbors make funny, but the Service Department was on it, very quickly got it cut down. So thank them for that. Also, we had another one down, Tudor, that was on our sidewalk, another tree, rather large limb, a very large limb, so I appreciate them getting on top of that very quickly. Water main break, yesterday on Bexley, affected several houses and stuff. I appreciate my residents calling me and letting me know. Sometimes I don't know these things, so I appreciate them contacting me. And Mike, thank you, you were not in town, and thank you for getting back to me very quickly on that, and we got it resolved, and hopefully, nobody's water is brown anymore. Helen, your water okay?
Yeah.
Okay, it's good, it's not sputtering out to you anymore. And the bad thing, I'm sure if y'all, if you follow Facebook, our police department is so appreciative of how our police officers keep everybody informed on what's going on in our city and everything. There was some shots fired at a resident's home on Crestfall, and one that got was injured. It seemed to be like a message was sent, we're still, they're still doing some investigating. I'm just seeing one of my residents that lives right across the street. There has been some problems at this home before, and thank you, when you do call me and you call me, and thank you for calling the police first, then calling me. I always tell my residents, call the police first, call me second. And, but thank you for doing that, and I can assure you that things are being taken care of on that matter, I can't go into any more detail on it. Another really exciting, not in my ward, but something exciting that I had the pleasure to attending with our state representative, Rep. Winnie DeBran, was the literacy cooperative was presented last weekend, not last weekend, last Monday, at Moorsville Library, and the governor's wife is very detrimental into this program. And what it is, Dolly Parton started this imaginary library several years ago, and it's where children, in certain areas, is great. I know our library signed up with it too, but any little kids that are eligible from birth to five years old can sign up and get free books. By the time that they go to kindergarten, they can acquire up to 60 books. To you, some of y'all, that might not sound like a big thing, but to a family that's on maybe a fixed income or just really busy and stuff, if you, I love to read, I've always loved to read to my grandchildren, I always love when my parents read to me. Books, you know, are expensive, and this is such a cool deal that these little kids have the opportunity to get a free book every month. So it's just if you, I have information on that, if you know somebody and it does our area, like I said, there's several different areas, Cleveland Heights, East Cleveland, Euclid, Shaker Heights, University Heights, Woodcliff, and all the school districts of Bedford, Warfield, and Maple Heights and Moorsville are in this program. So it's a great thing. I had the pleasure of spending about an hour with the governor's wife, and it was really amazing. That was a fun thing, that getting invited to these things is really fun. Another thing, I have some great news. I've been busy painting again, and I was accepted and picked out of 272 paintings. I am going to be at the Cuyahoga Valley Arts Center for the winter exhibit, and the open reception happens to be on my birthday, February 21st. So if you're not doing anything, come out, there will be a people's choice, so I have information, if you'd like to vote for me or go to this, it's a phenomenal gallery. One of my dreams is to have one here, hopefully, one day. We will get there. It may take me a while, it may be very long, but we'll have our art gallery here someday. So, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janudas.
Thank you. Pretty good. I like that invisible library thing. No, these aren't invisible books, are they?
No.
Just kidding. Okay. I just wanted to piggyback on what the mayor said. When you see this, it's really, it's really impressive what the Recreation Department is doing, the offerings at Allenwood now, and it's very impressive, and, you know, the days are gone where it's not all just about Little League baseball anymore, so few signups, but there's a lot of good programs here. It's just impressive. The town hall meeting is a very good offering. And also, I have to say that it's an interesting offer to reach out to the community for people who have special talents and skills to share and to, you know, bring those through, funnel those through the Recreation Department. I think that's a tremendous opportunity to build community, and I commend the new Recreation Department. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy.
While we're talking about Recreation Department, I just wanted to let people know to take advantage of that $50 rebate program we offer. I've been taking advantage of it the last couple of years. A senior over 62 at Bedford Heights Rec, if you go there, it's $115 for the year, the minus $50 comes out to $65, so you can't beat that program at all. It's got a walking track, pool, sauna, whirlpool, you name it, they got a lot of things in there for people, weights, anything you want to do. So just take advantage of that extra $50, and it really is very, very affordable. So that's all I've got to say, end of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mizek.
Good evening, everybody, and happy new year. And congratulations to Dr. Lou Hardy, who has taken my place as Vice Mayor. Hope you do a good job. Today's kind of a special day. It's National Squirrel Day, Recreation Day, and I'm sure that everybody loves their squirrel in their area. And this started back in 2001 to be the topic of conversation. But we won't go any further, but be nice to your squirrel, because if not, he's going to be nice to you here and leave a mess with his nuts and shells. And my next question goes to the City Manager, please. The new up-in, which is replacement of the Sunoco dealership there, will they be having gas pumps on the property?
Yes.
How come they're not installed yet? Have they said something about a February deadline, and now it's changed again?
I don't know. I think their goal was to be open by February, but I don't know the status of the recent inspections, I'd have to check on that. As far as the installation of the gas pumps, I mean, obviously, they have to coordinate that, so I'll have an update for you. I'll try to put it in the memo this week, but there will be, it will be a gas station.
Okay. And also, I thank my residents from Common Club for being here. We had a few discussions. Dr. Dawn ever had the day, the snow day with you meeting the salt, and she already had known that the salt had to be put out, so we took care of that issue. And we're trying to work closely with them as best we can for your happiness for everybody there. One more thing I want to thank publicly, Winnie DeBran, for swearing me in on the first official swearing day in January. She has never sworn anybody in, so we were kind of honored. We were the first three that she had a ceremony for. I want to say thank you. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes.
Hello, everyone, thanks for coming. First of all, I wanted to let everyone know that the Chocolate Walk is returning to Bedford, and we had a lot of fun last year. You went last year, you went home with a big bag of goodies. If you're not familiar with what a Chocolate Walk is, it's basically trick-or-treating for grownups. You get a bag, go get a map, and then you get to go around our downtown area and you'll get a piece of chocolate at every place that you visit on the map. We will also be having a wine pool, which is where you'll pay $20, and you'll be able to pull a bottle of wine or liquor, and you might have a chance of getting a bottle worth up to $200. But the bottle that you do pull will definitely be worth at least $20, so you don't lose anything when you play. Same with the gift card punch, same kind of concept, you pay $10 for a ticket, you punch out a box, and then you pull out the gift certificate or gift card inside, it will be worth at least $10. I can't tell you that most of them right now are worth 25. And then we have, we'll have a grand prize that'll be worth up to $100. And then we'll have a 50/50 raffle. It'll be a lot of fun. We had a lot of fun last year, everybody enjoyed it, so you can go online at BedfordDowntown.org/chocolate and buy your tickets, they're $20 apiece. The money that we raised from this event will help us put on other events, such as our First Fridays and our Puka Pickups, which helps us clean up our downtown area. We also have two major art pieces that we'll be putting into the downtown area this summer. Both of them will be murals, and that money will help to support that as well. In that same way, we are looking for volunteers for the Chocolate Walk. If you are a volunteer for the Chocolate Walk, you could, you'll work half of the Chocolate Walk, and you'll get the other half to, if you purchase a ticket, you will get the other half to walk around. Your tickets will be half price if you volunteer. We are also looking for gift card donations. We all have those gift cards that somebody gave us, and we throw them in a drawer, and we're never, ever, ever, ever going to use them. We need them. Please give us any gift cards that you might have laying around that you don't want anymore, or if you just want to be really nice and buy us a gift card that we can then use for the gift card punch, we'd appreciate that as well. We also will be having our Do Good Nicks meeting on Thursday, this, coming Thursday, the 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. It'll be at DePompey's. This week, or this month's theme is Bring a Friend. If you come with us, come hang out with us at DePompey's, we'll be working on Chocolate Walk, as well as getting ready to start on our First Friday planning. You can help make Bedford a little bit better, not that it's not already great, but you can make it a little bit better by coming and helping and volunteering. And that's all I have this evening, thank you very much.
You had to be in chocolate.
It is so much fun.
You could have stopped. Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
All right, first, I want to wish Paula a happy birthday. Her birthday was in this past week, so you needed to get publicly recognized for that.
Well, you're next.
Yeah, Thursday, but I forget about that one. Now, down to certain business. Mike, on Washington, I know we discussed the fact of having no parking from the school on down to Solent Road. Have they made a decision on that? Because the last couple of days, well, last week for the most part, school buses coming out of Cowles and Wheelock and whatnot are having a hell of a time because of people parking not only on Washington, but in the intersections. And then you got to go around those parked cars, and people come flying around Solent Road. We're going to have a head-on over there because there's just inconsiderate people parking on the street over there. We really ought to consider about getting those signs up, because if you go down by Solent Road at the intersection, it says, "No Parking," to the next sign, which has an arrow pointing uphill. So obviously, there were signs there at one time, and one at Solent is still there, and we need to do something there. We've got a situation there that is going to become worse if we don't do something about it. On the same line for parking, this is, since this is going out on the air, residents, please be considerate of your neighbors when it snows like this. Yes, we do have a two-inch snowfall requirement that you shouldn't park on your street, but we also have a distance from the curb parking requirement, and a lot of the driveways in my ward are only eight or nine feet wide. You try pulling in and out of the driveway apron that has big snow piles on it on the street that has somebody parked directly across from your driveway, it's very difficult. Try to park so that you're not across from the drive apron, or just stay off the street, period, especially when you can't see the curb. That's, that is an inconvenience for a lot of residents right now. And then the last thing here is, I don't know if we've been doing our due diligence on seeing streetlights, but we've got a heck of a lot of streetlights out now. The Rockside Road Bridge, I think almost everything's out on that. Broadway from Cernas all the way down to the Cemetery is dark. Now, that section goes dark every year, so I got a feeling that the streetlight heads over there are in bad shape. But we need to do something about some of these streetlights. They're sporadically out all over the place, but these are two of the worst areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get on with our extensive new business. Ordinance number 9751-20. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a community cost-share agreement with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for the community cost-share storm line, root cutting, and TV inspection project declared an emergency. Motion for suspension. That rose second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes. Motion for third and final. Spinks, second by Janutus. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a small section of town that pays into the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. It's not, most of us do not pay into that. This area is primarily on Industry Drive. When that fund was set up, or that fee was set up, the community gets a portion of those dollars back. Because it's such a small amount, Bedford's share is only, it'll range, depending on the collections, somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000 a year. But those funds have to go back to some type of sewer program, project, something like that. Obviously, $3,000 a year isn't going to accomplish a whole lot, so you're allowed to carry those funds over upwards to five years. The city was, which is what we decided to do. We didn't have a specific program in mind at the time. We started carrying that forward, and you could, being that you can only do it for five years, the first year where we started receiving funds was, I believe it was in 2014, 2015. So to date, we have about $14,000 and change in the fund that we need to start looking to utilize. And what we are going to do is, we put together a program specific to some areas that we know that need to be addressed. One of them is Eldred, and the plan is to do root cutting and partner with Cuyahoga County to utilize their equipment to do root cutting on Eldred from Center Road all the way to Southwick. And then there's a couple other areas in town where we know that our sewer, there is a break, we're getting some infiltration, so we have it narrowed down to a block, but our camera system doesn't allow, we don't have the ability to get in there and find this exact problem. So the other amount, the other funds are going to be utilized, working with the county, bringing their equipment in, and identifying that specific break. So what this does is, this is about an $11,000 project that's utilizing the regional storm fee, and we're going to partner with Cuyahoga County, we're going to do the work, and then we'll submit reimbursement for that $11,000. And there'll still be about $3,000 left in the fund that will, as we collect those small fees on an annual basis, we'll probably build that up a little more and do another project.
Very good. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
And that brings us to the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, your comment. And please try to limit your comments to about five minutes if you can.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I haven't learned either, so my voice is really not that good. And Mr. Melas and Mrs. Miesak, I am very concerned about getting a letter. I have not received it, but other people have, that how many kilometers sending out 63-hour bill for water, sewer, and rubbish? How can you define eight suites on a single person, or five people next door, or how many are in each suite? How can you send that kind of bill? I have not received it, although I did renew my lease, and hopefully, this will be the last year I'll be there. Have you been able to reach lady in Michigan?
I did have a brief conversation with her.
Oh, finally, huh?
Yeah, we spoke briefly.
Was she nice to you?
We shared opinions on the matter and the management style and some things like that.
Interesting. Because I had an idea, if you couldn't get her, send her a certified letter, and that way she would have to sign it.
No, we spoke.
Do you think this, do you think there's anything that's going to happen there? Because they just had a truck come yesterday, finally a plow. They didn't hire the people that were there before because they wanted a two-year lease, but this company only wants a one-year. That's how cheap they are. They raised the rent. They're not doing what they should do. I have never been so disappointed in living there all these years. And of course, my neighbor has some thoughts as well. Thank you very much, and I'm sorry that my voice is not what it should be. I'm okay, I'm not contagious.
You heard him, that's good.
Hi, my name is Beverly Segal. I live at 501 Lee Road, Bedford, Ohio, the Colony Club, and as Millie said, I'm speaking for a lot of people in my building that are on fixed incomes, including myself, and they're raising the rent, and like she said, water, sewer, and trash. We never had that before. The water was included in your rent. $20 included in the rent. And then we had Melvin, who was patrolling at night, and I felt safe. Now we don't because cars are getting stolen. They said they no longer needed his service. So I'm disappointed too. 27 years that I've lived there, I've never seen anything like it in my life. And when you're on a fixed income, you can't meet your rent, and then what happens? You get evicted, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion for three. Seeing none, we have a motion for adjournment. Hey, Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Thank you for coming tonight.